All the twenty second, twenty twenty four, and the time is eleven fifteen. It's morning time, eleven fifteen, calling me to order. Trustee Smith is absent. Trustee McFadden?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Tyson?
Here.
Trustee Webster?
Here.
Trustee Muse?
Here.
Also President of Village Clerk, Juanita Darden. Corporation Councilor Sally. Mayor.
Here.
Roberts. Department Leader, Myneal Smith Police Chief, John Thompson, Economic Development. I'm Keywan, IT guy, and host for Friends and Business. Coming these from village in a pledge allegiance.
With that allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you say anything about a man?
Mayor, she has to leave.
Lord, I almost want to come and say thank you for all, and thank you for allowing us to do all of the improvements here in the village of Dixmoore. Actually, continue to keep your shelves, your loving arms, and your blood all around us. Let us continue to do right things and get Dixmoore, keep Dixmoore under order. And just thank you for everything you have done.
Amen. We don't have the bills, but I just want to speak about the mailbox. Somebody is jamming the mailbox outside. Um, had to call the post office at Harvey. So they're jamming the mail. We're not here on the weekend, they're putting the mail in, so the mailbox was jammed with all the village mail on top of it. Okay, so the post office did come out, I showed the mayor and a couple more people with the post office box. So when we're not here, they're taking our mail, putting it in a blue box, and somebody's putting it in this gym. She had to come out, so um, I don't know what we're gonna do about the bills, but I want to talk to Mr. McCa- I mean, McCaskill about it, he doesn't see coming. He didn't, so we just got a tub of mail.
You wait and see if I was, I don't know what else we can do.
Yeah, somebody jammed it. I took pictures of it. I don't know if that's intentional or what it is. Never had this problem before, mail being jammed like that. So we can go with um, department commentary, Mr. John Thompson, Economic Development.
Um, no report.
Chief Smith?
Yes. Good morning everyone. Good morning. Council, um, probably friends. Uh, just real quick, just wanna advance, we were successful, the Dixmoore Police Department, uh, got saturation patrol called Light Up the Night. Uh, here are the results here. So Dixmoore Police Department announced the conclusion of operation, Light Up the Night, which began Saturday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty four. We started ten P M and concluded uh, Sunday, August eighteenth, where a um, Dixmoore Police personnel conducted a saturation patrol detail with the goal of decreasing criminal activity, increasing enforcement of law enforcement code, Illinois vehicle code, uh, and Dixmoore local ordinance traffic laws. Law enforcement results from the six hours special detail. So during that six hours, we had twenty-two traffic stops, uh, out of those traps, uh, eight arrests. Uh, we did have one criminal arrest misdemeanor, uh, one DUI arrest, run a hundred forty-seven Dixie Highway. Uh, sixteen local ordinance, uh, citations and tow three vehicles. So conclusion of Dixmoore Police Department conducted this pilot program in the effort to save lives by enforcing, focusing on the leading contributory causes of crashes, which are speeding, impaired driving, electronic device use, fare to yield, and disobeying truck patrol services. We will continue conducting enforcement initiatives and reducing criminal activity with the goal of promoting public safety in the village of Dixmoore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got approval of bill, I mean, approval of amendments executive board meeting, June twenty seventh, July first, July first, and July twenty fifth. You're gonna do them separate or all together?
Do it all together.
Do a, I'm just vote?
Looking for a motion.
I make the motion.
Motion by trustee Mitchell. Second by trustee Webster. Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
And trustee Smith is absent. Um, trustee Smith put on the agenda discussion as approval of hotel stay I M L September nineteenth through the twenty-first. I think we was waiting to see if we had the money, I'm not sure. It's up to the board, not to the mayor.
Was the treasurer supposed to let us know or?
Unless you guys, unless you guys only, don't only pending what the treasurer says, I mean.
Mayor said, did y'all wanna go on a pending what the treasurer say, and then come back and let you know pending, because you don't have nothing until the end of September. Okay.
And the, the I M L is when?
Nineteenth through twenty-first of next month, September.
Do you say pending or whatever?
Uh, yeah, have we registered yet or?
I did send everybody registration, they gave me in to the treasurer.
Can we do that?
Can we? You pay soon, looking for a motion, uh, to pass, uh, pass for the uh, hotel stay for I M L, pending what the treasurer say we have to work with. Parts pending of the hotels.
Motion by trustee Tyson. Second by trustee Webster, trustee Tyson.
Yes.
Trustee Webster.
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
And trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Smith is absent. Discussions as approval of pit stop truck and trailer I M C, they're going over there with Benji at twenty-two fifty-seven West, one hundred thirty-ninth Street. Just spoke to Mr. Butler, Mr. Butler said the board, if they choose, so they can vote pending his inspection and everything. So just another um, company going up coming in there already.
Another trucking company?
This will be a repair company.
It's like the company that they have aware now, that they have, same thing.
One company left.
One company left, another company coming in.
So he, he had just repaired, diesel repair shop. So the other repair shop left, why they can't put a board in there.
Looking for a motion.
Make the motion.
Motion by trustee Mitchell. Second by trustee Tyson. Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
No.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
And trustee Webster?
Yes.
And trustee, um, Smith is absent. Discussion approval of ordinance adopting regular requirement for regular scheduled committee and board meeting for the village to hold. These two go together, discussion slash approval register adopted revised meeting, meeting schedule for the village of Dixmoore. Um, it was spoke about having one meeting instead of two. It's hard for a lot of board members to count to two, you know, Judy says she's gonna be out of town a lot, but it's up to the board.
And that should be at the call, like emergency meeting or something like that?
Well, especially.
Come special meeting in forty-eight hours.
So right now, you only have um, two meets in September, one in um, two in October, one in November, one in December. So, it's up to the board, whatever way they're going from.
You better one of these cases.
So we're not, we're not canceling anything right now. We only, that's all we were having because of, of circumstances.
No, we're canceling everything, so then we can start doing one meeting a month.
Unless there's, unless it's a special meeting.
Yeah, special emergency meeting that you can always call.
Right.
Report numbers of, if ever could call a special meeting for anything.
With the same notice form.
You said just one meeting a month? Yes.
One meeting, are we um, what, what day are we moving to or canceling then?
Looking for, it'll be the fourth.
Fourth Thursday.
Of the month, of every month. Unless we call for, you know, unless we need a special meeting to come in.
But it do have to be in the paper then?
Yes, correct, if we're gonna change the schedule overall, it has to be in the paper by state law. Um, that's just a normal requirement. Normally, we end up after August, I think we only normally have, we have one meeting a month anyway, that was ten.
Right, that was why I was saying what I said about the canceling.
Well, what is the necessity of canceling a meeting?
It, it's either way, I mean, if you don't have to, it was a proposition that was talked about before the board. We draft the ordinance based upon the conversation that was had before the board. People were showing up, not showing up, and because we normally go down to one meeting a month at this point going forward, after August, correct? We are already at August the twenty-second. Um, if we were to make the change now would be the time to make. And as I always say, it's the boards, it's the will of the board. Board wants to vote for it, they can vote for it. Board doesn't wanna vote for it, they don't wanna vote for it. There are some concerns about attendance, and the thought would be as if there was, if people are having a hard time showing up to two, it might be easier if people show up tomorrow.
I, I see no reason to change, because if you're gonna show, you're gonna show, period. If there's two meetings or one meeting, I don't see any reason to change.
I got a question.
Yeah.
On um, can we do one in, um, one Zoom and one person?
So that's, I, I saw the question, no, because you can, if you are not here individually, and the majority of the forum is here, they can vote to allow you to participate. But it's not like the COVID rules, and COVID numbers are going back off, which is flawed. Um, but they have not reinstituted the order to be able to do that without special circumstances at this point in time. If you remember how we do everything, that's not in effect anymore.
So now if you have three trustees, two people wanna Zoom.
You can do that, you can vote them in. You can vote to allow them to do online attendance. But I mean, again, it's.
It's strictly up to the board, so I'm looking for a motion.
For one meeting?
To uh, pass the, pass the resolution for us to have the board meeting, the ordinance, I'm sorry, to adopt the ordinance to have one board meeting a month, pending us calling for special meetings.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
So question, are we doing one at a time, or are you, okay, I do the ordinance first and the resolution?
I mean, you're really, they're tied into one another, you could. You could do, I mean, you could, let's, let's do it one at a time, if there's gonna be a problem. Um, if there's gonna be an issue, let's do um, uh, one at the same time. Can we start with the resolution, because that makes more sense, because.
The ordinance up there first as well.
Okay, yeah, you wanna do the ordinance, it's fine, that's fine. Yeah.
Group call.
Who made the motion?
Tony. I mean, Mitch.
Trustee Mitchell, and second by trustee Webster.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
No.
And trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
I want to say one thing, thanks everybody, and I apologize. The meeting in December is December the tenth, and the reason we, and the resolution.
Yeah, it's Christmas.
I think you're all great, but I'll probably be spending Christmas Eve with my five-year-old son.
Well, I think we won't, I think we'll be spending Christmas Eve with the village of Dixmoore due to the laws have changed for elections, so.
No, but they'll be done by then.
Yeah. But we will be here for Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
So we need a motion, uh, the next one.
Okay, so looking for a motion, that's all. Over adopting the resolution, uh, requires the, you know, schedule meeting for the village of Dixmoore.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Group call.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
No.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
And trustee Smith is absent. Um, one question, um, it's not an agenda, but we will be trying to call a special meeting or put on the next board meeting. The board we have to approve for the Toria Board election is coming up, so we need to bring the agenda for September. That's why I made the statement that we might be.
Remember this in September. I will make September, please.
Okay, September. Discussion as approval of ratifying the closure of certain real property located within a redevelopment project area for the village of Dixmoore. Want to do a motion, second, and then you can speak about it.
Yeah.
Looking for a motion?
Discussion.
Don't get, we, we, discussion after.
Okay, I make the motion.
Motion by Mitch, second by Webster. Discussion. Tony, you had a discussion.
Um, is, what is the, this is concerning, you know, far as the redevelopment project, where it's gonna be at?
Sure, so this is the Dixmoore car parts property. John did a nice job of putting a deal together for us to get a car parts company to come in, and not only buy the property, take out the um, the money, when I say take out, to give us enough money to pay off what we owe the South Suburban Mayors and Managers for some remediation. And then we'll end up getting a tipping fee, an impact fee for any car that comes in there. The village will get five dollars a car. They're also paying for our fees, which will reimburse the village to a certain extent, the purchase price. And this was talked about, if you remember, John brought in the options, um, and put together.
There was three options, there was three options that, that was brought in with that. And again, this, this particular project will be over right behind a steel mill on Wood Street. Man, ain't nothing but a lot of trees and green and garbage out over there.
So mayor, question I just asked when you said about the five-dollar car party, can you tie this in with A R L two or no?
Yeah, well, we do that agreement, we can put it on hold. So there, most municipalities will have an impact fee when they have these large users come in, and that generates additional revenue for the village.
So this ordinance, is it only related to that particular um, piece of land though?
It is only related to that particular piece of land, but the property address is commonly known as one four four one O South Wood.
Attorney.
One four 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 one. Right, well, okay. The pins on the website show both O one, it, the G I, okay. The pin numbers are on exhibit A of the exhibit. The assessor's office shows a common address of one four four oh one South Wood and one four four one one South Wood Street. And there was some debate over the actual address. We have the proper pins per survey and title, but because the G I S is sometimes a little off, John, would you mind explaining?
Cook County has all three pins under one four four one one, it's on the outside of the street. All three pins are listed on the Cook County portal. So I sent that off to uh, the attorney for the buying party, and it was already done. One forty-four eleven, all three pins are listed.
Right, and the title commandant came back with both ten and eleven, so we have exhibit A.
Can't be ten, ten is on the opposite side.
I understand it's on the other side of the street, but I prefer to be able to close the property and have it covered both ways, even because, as you know, the pin number's controlled.
You need a document to show you that all three of them are under?
I think we've got a title commandant that shows it.
One one, okay, whatever you say, attorney.
Thank you.
Trustee Webster, how do we calculate how many cars they bring in per day?
They have to give us a receipt. They have to give us a receipt of the cars, we can audit that receipt, and sometimes, much like when they have waste hauling, they measure them. We could go and audit their numbers, we could send somebody over there with a clicker and say that this many cars came in and I served today.
It's on, they pay the state, and the state sends, sends us the.
But we're collecting their pounds.
They, they register each car that comes in, state gives us a report on it, just like the oil and fuel tax.
But aren't they paying monthly?
Yeah, I guess. All I'm saying is, it's already, it'll be registered with the state, so we will be.
Every time they buy a car, they have to deliver it, it automatically, is automatically uh, registered with the uh, with the uh, state, with the secretary of state. Uh, you need a state report, you can tell.
So they're real-time updated, they're not done quarterly?
Uh, trustee McFadden?
Yeah, um, I'm kinda stuck here. So Sally, you were saying that the property address, I gotta get back to that, one forty-four ten and one forty-four eleven.
Correct.
I'm trying to get my mind to understand how three properties can encompass one document that has them on two different sides of the street. Are they gonna be working both sides of the street with their business or?
So, in realist, in, I don't mean to sound lost in a way, it's really the pin numbers that control on this. Um, and we have the pin numbers, and the pin numbers are covered. The pin numbers are twenty-nine oh seven two-two oh oh four two, twenty-nine oh seven two-two oh oh four three, twenty-nine oh seven two-two oh 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 four four. That indicates, like John said, and what I'm saying is, the property we recognize is one four four oh one South Wood and one four four one one South Wood, all on the same side of the street. What we are saying though, is that during the due diligence process, project, process of this, a, a street address, which in the real estate world means nothing, came back with ten, which of course, in every, in every suburban in Chicago address, even in Otter on the opposite side of the street, I completely acknowledge that fact. But the property, there is no question that the property is O one and one one. We just want the document to say ten to cover it, to give the authorization that, to cover, to ensure that we're as comprehensive as we can to get that authorization. So it's not on both sides of the street, it's on one side of the street, we just found a stray dog address, and we want that covered to make sure we're closing on it the right way.
I understand.
It's one one, there's no question it's one one.
It's one and eleven.
It's one and eleven, there's no question.
The pins come back to one and eleven.
That part I can understand, I just can't understand what ten, what you're saying right now.
Like this type of.
What, what, what happened, and then, again, what happened twice, a lot, a lot of time, the county has these. If you look around out here, not just in that area, but even on Cooper, on the Hoynes, on Vale, a lot of these addresses is just messed up. I mean, they had a house from Harvey on a hundred forty-sixth and Vale. It's the county, they not coming out here actually taking their pictures and doing the right surveys. But the pin numbers match that particular area, that area that you were talking about.
And the initial, John just had the, the newer title report. The initial title report had a property address of one four four one O South Wood Street with the same pin numbers. It was probably a typo. But I would prefer that we be comprehensive on this thing than not comprehensive on it, because of the same pins.
So the pin, the pin.
Can you, can you read this? What's it say? Ma'am, could you read this in the record, this address?
One forty-four ten Wood Street, it was by the first American Title Company issuing two seven seven five Dow Road, Warrenville, Illinois, on July twenty-second and July twenty-nine. July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
This one?
Yep.
We, you're not.
Warrenville?
The address.
Yes, it's, it's their headquarters, their headquarters. Correct, and that's all I'm saying. I'm saying just how were the mistake that they made?
And what's the recorder number on that?
Is here. What's on that?
The title makes sure it's.
Two zero zero two.
What I'm trying to say is, the county has them all listed under the same pin. Title company has it listed under the same pin. And.
There was a mistake.
And the tax portal has them listed under the same pin for Cook County.
The, the, yeah, the whole thing about it is, what we're doing, we're selling them the pins, okay? And the pins is gonna be, in that area, is gonna be that land that we're talking about selling. I'm looking on it right now, I'm looking dead at it right now from here.
For the western.
And, and, and it got, it got exactly what you guys are saying right here on this uh, site that I'm in.
Okay, so we won't have to worry about them coming back.
Zero percent chance, zero percent chance, zero percent chance.
It's not gonna come back.
It's because the pins control. It's a touch, it's a.
No, really? No, no, you say.
It's a typo, it's a typo. It's okay. The title is a typo.
The ti- the title company made a mistake.
Title company made a mistake, I wanna make sure that it's all. All it is is a typo.
Better say it's on.
Exactly.
So it would be up to the owner at that point to give that straightened out, or how does that?
Yeah, well, we closed them off.
Once it closed, it, it, it'll go through the uh, the documents to be given to the county, and the county automatically go through and straighten all of that. It's just like, you know, you got some houses that's been put out here.
Oh, I know.
And the county have it, have it looking like a house, and it ain't nothing but a vacant lot there.
Yeah.
They got a lot of stuff crossed up, so until you tell the county that, then you're gonna have a problem. Like, the village of Dixmoore is not really at this address. It's on uh, left, one hundred forty-fourth left, at that vacant lot over there, so. Cause they sold it a few times, sold the village a few times.
I'll bet you this.
Not knowing they couldn't do.
A third of all the closings, just a problem with the pin or an address or something like that, it happens a lot. And title companies doing these.
The title company made a mistake, the county didn't make a mistake, the county could, the title company should correct that mistake.
And they will at the closing.
How can, the title company?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the title policy. So the lawyers, as you know, John, the lawyers sign off on the title policy to be pretty close, right? So that will get picked up at the closing.
I'm not gonna argue about it anymore, but.
Look, the thing of it is, we're, we're, we're selling the pins, right?
Forty-four ten, I would have a problem with it, it's on the west side of the street, I would never make a resolution.
John, if, if, look, what you're doing now, we're selling the pins. I'm not worried about the address.
Okay.
Okay, the address ain't got nothing, that's our equation right now. You're selling the pins. The pins follow where they's for being. Which is one forty-four one and one forty-four eleven. That's what the phone says, that's what, what this uh, site says that I'm on. The, the address, I ain't worrying about one forty-four ten, cause you know, ten is on the west side of the street, and we know one and eleven is on the east side of the street. So, right now, we just running around in circles and we selling pins.
Yes, sir.
Everybody, are y'all okay for a vote now? Any more questions?
No.
Group call.
Trustee Mitchell?
No.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden? Yes, telling that what they're saying is true about the one forty-four ten. Trustee, um, Muse?
Yes.
Discussion as approval of adopting regulations regarding moose and greenery within the village of Dixmoore?
Looking for a motion?
That's about the trees, correct?
Grass, I thought it's grass, trees, or maybe the.
Greenery, weeds, grass, trees. Uh, what we have, trustees, and just enlighten you all a little bit on it, is something that we're trying to get in place, because we have a lot of people on vacant lots, and they got all this wild trees and grass on it, they ain't doing nothing, and they don't care, even the banks. So what the village is doing now, we're moving to a different direction, where we gonna start citing them, placing a lien on it, perhaps taking it from them. That way we can get it developed, because I know I'm tired of seeing all this, all this jungle out here that we have. So it's time for us to do something about it, it's up to you guys. Don't make, they don't, they're not allowed to do this nowhere else. You go to the posing, you don't see all that grown-up tree and uh, shrubs all around, so why should we have it here? So, that's what this uh, that's what this is about. So I'm looking for a motion to get that passed, uh, or if you guys wanna discuss it and sit on it till the next meeting, it's up to you.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion by trustee Mitchell, second by trustee Webster, trustee Mitchell?
Discussion. Again, discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, discussion. Does this also include the easements that are going around the village? We got a lot of, I call it small parking, that you can't park on, but the homeowners are responsible for keeping the grass cut, even though it belongs to the city, it's a city easement. So what, as a village, are we gonna do about all these trees that are on our own property that's all?
So what, as a village, are we gonna do about all these trees that are on our own property that's all around the village, are we getting that down? To make an example?
We've been cutting trees, you don't see no trees around on the easement.
Well, maybe I'm not calling it the right thing, but go down Spalding, all those trees, where you can't see the sidewalk that actually runs through there.
Okay, well, that's not, that's on the other side, that, that's on the other side, that ain't Dixmoor's, that's on the other side.
Hold up.
That ain't Dixmoor property.
Hold up.
These, these that you're talking about, what I'm talking about is on the other side of the sidewalk.
There, and there's a ditch there with all the trees, you know, you got houses down here.
Uh-huh.
Look out the door, you see all those trees going down Spalding.
That's not, that's not on our side.
That's not Dixmoor.
That's not Dixmoor's, Dixmoor is on the street side of the sidewalk, you haven't been down, I, I ain't gonna say that, but I don't know if you've been down Spalding, we just said, about what, ten trees cut down Spalding?
Did I make a mistake?
I don't know.
Street when I came in here?
I don't know, you had to, if you think that's on our side of town, because on Dixmoor side, this side of the sidewalk, it ain't, ain't no trees there, trustee. I can guarantee.
You moved them overnight?
No, you can stand out the door and look straight down, that's not Dixmoor tree, we cut all our trees on our, on our easement.
So who does that belong to?
That's, that's why we're trying to get this on, please, so we can go after it.
Okay, we got a sidewalk, believe it or not, I don't trust it if you ever see it, there's a sidewalk that goes through there, it was there when I moved into Dixmoor.
Exactly.
You can no longer see it because there's trees on both sides.
No, it's not on both sides, it's only one side, trustee.
I think, it's terminology.
It's only one side.
I'm just, that's what I'm trying to get the terminology.
No, no, as you say, is it in Dixmoor, is it Dixmoor property?
It's not, it's the difference between Dixmoor and Dixmoor is all property, that's the difference, and I.
We just, if you stand out here right outside that door, trustees, you can look straight down there now, you couldn't do that at first.
But it's.
We don't have no trees on our easement, period.
The weeds.
It's, it's just the terminology, is Dixmoor property versus.
It's corporate, and that's.
And, and the guy's been cutting, so I mean, yeah, it's about time for us to run down through there and cut this part of the wheel sidewalk.
Yeah, it's.
The trees are not there, the trees.
The trees that I see on the south side of the street don't belong to this, that's not Dixmoor.
No, it's not Dixmoor.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm saying, ours is on the.
Okay, so it's not Dixmoor.
No.
All right.
Wait, wait, now I'm confused. It is Dixmoor, it's not.
No, it's in Dixmoor, but it's not on our property.
That's what she's trying to say to you, that's all, I think it's just, it is Dixmoor.
You wanna know who cut it there?
It's not Dixmoor property.
Right.
But it is.
No, she said, it, what she saying, do it belong to Dixmoor?
I'm saying who's responsible for cutting.
She wanna know who, who's responsible for cutting that, no, that's why we're trying to pass this now, so we can get in touch with the people that own it and start finding and leaving.
So on the north side of the sidewalk.
It's in, it's in Dixmoor, but we don't own it. No, but she understand that part, that ain't part she's talking about.
I don't know.
She's trying to.
I know, they don't understand that part, I mean, they don't understand it.
Anyway, it's not, no, it's not, it's not ours to do.
The land that is, if you're going down Spalding, the land that's north of the sidewalk does not belong to Dixmoor.
The land north of the sidewalk is Dixmoor, and there ain't no trees there, the trees are on the south side.
Scrubage, you know, that this. Okay, so the land on the south side of the sidewalk belongs to.
Belongs to the other people, and that's the stuff that's grown over to Dixmoor side that's hanging over, that's in our arms.
Don't we have a right to cut what hangs over on our property?
No, you can't go over there and cut up people's property, can't do it, that's why we're trying, that's why we're trying to get this stuff in place, so we can place a lien on that property over there, because we shouldn't have all that around here like that.
So we had a problem the other day, we had a resident call, called the police, trying to cut somebody else's property. Mister Butler, the mayor went over there, they can't cut nobody else's property, because it over, they want to cut the property down, called the police. I don't know, but if it's over on my property, I don't understand why I'm taking it for. So they said, wait till the, wait till your husband come home and see if y'all can work it out.
You can cut what hang over on to your property, but you can't cut they trees or they bushes or whatever.
I'm not gonna cut just, just at that property line. They called the police, they actually called the police. Oh. It'll be known when the police get there. Mister Butler went to the. It was bad. I'll do it back, okay?
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion, y'all wanna hold on to the next meeting? So y'all can go out there, we can check it out, I'll tell me, it's up to you.
No, this, um, will.
It was a motion by Mitch, and second by Webster.
Rule call.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Mills?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Samantha Zapsen, hurry up and get it cut down.
There's some stuff we're gonna start.
Yeah, certainly, I'm really.
So I got a list too. I'm serious. Any citizens come in, anybody wanna speak? None. Any call session? No approval, I didn't discuss a call session, can we get a motion and second to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by.
I'll say.
Mitchell, second by Webster, trustee Mitchell, trustee Webster.
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Mills?
Yes.
And the time is.